Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the continuation of the City of Waterloo Council Meeting, Monday, June 25, 2018, the evening edition. Kind of disclosure of pecuniary interests in the general nature thereof. If there's any further seeing none. A moment of reflection. At the beginning of this council meeting, we pause to think about the needs of our community. May we show wisdom and compassion in all our decisions? And first up tonight is some scholarship announcement. I'll turn it over to Councilor Reese.
Thank you, Mayor Jaworski. It's my honor to read this presentation tonight. The City of Waterloo Millennium Scholarship for Outstanding Community Involvement is a one-time bursary of $1,000 awarded annually to a graduating high school student for exceptional community service. In the scholarship's 19th year, three youth applied for this scholarship, and the selection committee had a tough choice to make because the candidates showed their countless hours of volunteerism and outstanding community leadership. This year's recipient is a young woman who has dedicated many hours to the betterment of her community. Basma is a remarkable youth who is actively involved in her community and her school. Some of her many accomplishments include a volunteer with the YMCA School Age Youth Development Program, as an electric car club team manager and member at Blue Vale Collegiate Institute, and as a St. John Ambulance Marathon volunteer. Basma is a remarkable, well-rounded individual whose passion and dedication to the community was evident in her application letter. Basma best describes the opportunities she has had and how they have influenced her as "Volunteering has given me the opportunity to work behind the scenes while being a part of the team that will make it happen." As an accountant, I will have the expertise to consult with not-for-profit organizations and provide advice so fundraisers like the Waterloo Marathon can expand. Volunteering made me realize that we all play a key role in the business of life or busyness of life, and I want to ensure that I can help support organizations dedicated to benefiting the community. Laurel Lavelle, head of guidance at Blue Vale Collegiate Institute, states, "Basma is an exemplary academic student who also commits herself to the betterment of both her school and local community. Rarely can a student balance so many activities with grades in the top 5% of her class. To date, Basma has earned over 2,515 hours of community hours participating in activities that extend from students' council initiatives to working with children and the elderly. It takes a special kind of person to reach so many unique populations, and Basma is just that person. This fall, she will be attending the University of Waterloo in a Bachelor of Accounting and Financial Management Program. Congratulations to Basma in receiving this honorable award, acknowledging the strong commitment and positive impact youth are making to the City of Waterloo. We look forward to following your career. Congratulations."
You picked the University of Waterloo, Waterloo School. Why was that?
Well, first of all, I live in Waterloo, so it's very close, and it's nice to stay local. But I believe that the University of Waterloo has one of the best accounting programs that best suits my needs, to go on to become a chartered professional accountant, and their co-op program is very good as well, so that's why I chose the University of Waterloo.
A terrific answer. I'm glad you're staying in our community.
Thank you.
Councilor Reese.
Congratulations again. When did you decide you wanted to be an accountant? It seems like you're pretty set on this.
Yeah, actually, it's kind of a long story because I didn't really want to be an accountant up until the end of grade 11, actually. So I wanted to go into science and, you know, be a doctor, be a pharmacist or something, and then I realized after I took grade 11 sciences, and I also took grade 11 accounting, I realized that I actually truly had a genuine passion for accounting. And so I realized that my love for accounting kind of outweighed my like for science, so I decided to go into accounting as well.
Great. Good luck next year, and have a great summer.
Thanks.
Tell us a bit about the Electric Car Club. What was your interest in that? How did you become involved?
So I became involved in the Electric Car Club in grade nine, and I've never, I'm not really a techie person, I've never done anything technological, so it was really a big step for me. My older brother was also in Electric Car Club, so he kind of motivated me to go in it as well. And pretty much what Electric Car Club is, for people who don't know, is we're a group of around 30 motivated individuals who work together after school on Tuesdays to design, build, test, and race life-size electric cars that we raced at the University of Waterloo. And we just raced it a few weeks ago in May, and we won first place in both of our races.
Congratulations. You'll have to go over to the Faculty of Engineering where they have those garages, eh, Councilor Henry? The student garages, Metcalf, yes.
And I think what's true, and you'll find the same thing here, is even you don't have to be inside those technical disciplines to be able to engage those clubs and opportunities. They could use some accounting help, I am sure. They will be clamoring over you, and you can sort of arrange your own side deal of what other projects you'll take on in exchange for helping them with their accounting.
Wonderful. Congratulations, Basma.
Thank you so much.
Now, following on that, we have the Integrated Multimodal Transportation Study: Waterloo Westside Memorandum. And Phil, you're going to be speaking on this?
Yes, just to introduce the project team. So the Westside Integrated Multimodal Study, or what we call IMMTS, has been underway for some time. We've had two PICs, but the last PIC was June 5. So we felt there really wasn't enough time for the public to engage. We got some comments from the PIC, but we wanted to table the report and put it on our website, so give the public more chance to review it, to comment on it. The technical analysis from the report is still available for any of the Westside's developments to base their traffic studies on. So tonight, we have members from WSP, a large consulting firm. The project team members are based in Toronto and in Kitchener. Dave Lukasik is the project manager, and his area of expertise is traffic analysis and problem solving. Jay Cranstone is a senior landscape architect. His area of expertise is active transportation. Denny Yip, his area of expertise is transit. And I'm also happy to introduce Julius Salvini, who is retained by the city to peer review all the work that WSP is doing and the study deliverables. So after the presentation, we'll be happy to answer any questions, and I'll turn it over to David right now.
Thank you. Welcome, David.
Thank you. So, as Phil mentioned, it's been some time since we've initiated the study. The study has started in 2006, and the purpose of the study was to evaluate the implications of increased growth in West Waterloo on the transportation network and to see how, what improvements can be made to respond to this growth, and how to expand, connect, and integrate active transportation and transit in the area. So the goal of the study is to identify opportunities for roadway active transportation and transit improvements. And based on identified opportunities, the city and region should monitor traffic and initiate separate studies such as environmental assessments or individual intersection studies to investigate these improvements in more detail. So on this slide, we're showing the study steps that were undertaken as part of this project. So the project initiation meeting was held in June 2016, so that's when we were awarded the project. And we had a meeting with city and regional staff and with Salvini Consulting. And this was to determine the scope of the project, the anticipated schedule, obtain some of the preliminary data, and discuss the methodology of undertaking the study with the team. Throughout the project, we had, based on my records, over 14 teleconferences with the region, city, and Salvini Consulting, and one additional meeting in May 2017. So before the first Public Information Center, we did existing traffic conditions analysis, and we've also identified what are the committed to and planned roadway improvements in the study area, and we held the first Public Information Center on April 2017. After the first Public Information Center, we've gathered and taken input from the public, and also in consultation with the region and city, we did modeling of future traffic conditions to 2031. And we've assessed two different scenarios with the committed improvements and anticipated growth, and then additional improvements on top of the committed ones which are recommended by WSP. And we also came up with improvements for all modes of transportation, including active and transit. The second Public Information Center was held earlier this month, and we've presented the recommendations at the second Public Information Center, and now we're at this step of presenting the study findings to council. So as I mentioned, the first Public Information was held on April 4, 2017, and that was to present the existing conditions and planned roadway improvements. 29 residents have registered for the Public Information Center. The second PIC was held on June 5, and that was to present the recommendations for future conditions and receive public input, and 18 residents have registered as attending. So in this slide, we've assessed approximately 20 existing intersections in the study area based on traffic counts that were provided to us by the city and by the region. And all of the existing intersections operate at acceptable overall levels with several intersections having critical movements. So that's only like a particular movement which would be operating at level of Service E. And those are at the intersections of Fisher-Halman Road with Columbia Street in the PMP tower, the westbound-through movement, the northbound-left on Herb Street and Fisher-Halman Road, and at University Avenue and Fisher-Halman Road, the northbound-left and the southbound-through-right So the next step was to identify what improvements are committed to take place in the region up to, or in West Waterloo up to 2031. And this information was available through a number of documents, including the capital projects, the completed and ongoing environmental assessment studies, also the Stantic Consulting Transportation Overview Study for the Beaver Creek Road and Conservation Drive area, as well as inputs from the city and the region. And the reason I have to mention inputs from the city and the region, because for some of these improvements in the future, the details are not yet known, so we received some input of what these improvements could include. So I won't go through each individual project, but if needed, we can go back to this slide. So after identifying what improvements are committed to in the study area, we used macro modeling approach to come up with traffic forecasts. And for macro modeling, we needed to get some growth numbers. So we used, based on the region's visum model, the anticipated growth, so in the entire region between 2017 and 2031 is approximately 100,000 growth in population, which is a 20% increase relative to existing levels, and 40,000 in employment, which is a 17% increase relative to existing levels. In the actual study area, the population growth is 6,400 people and 736 jobs. So based on directions from the city, in addition to the growth in the region's model, we've coded an additional 8,000 employees in the employment zone 141. So that's the employment zone between Columbia Street and Herb Street east of Willmont Lane. So in this slide, so the first step we did is we've coded the committed transportation improvements in the study network, and once we forecasted traffic to the turning movement level, we've assessed the intersections using the Synchro software for signalized and unsignalized intersections, and Arcady software for roundabouts. And based on our forecast, there are a number of intersections that are anticipated to operate over capacity and with high delays unless additional roadway improvements are made. So I won't go through each individual intersection, but I'll just highlight some of the critical areas. So that would be the intersection of Herbsville Road and Columbia Street. It's projected to operate over capacity in both AM and PMP towers with heavy delays in the PMP tower for the westbound left-turn movement. Columbia Street and Fisher-Halman Road is also projected to be over capacity both in the AM and PMP towers. Then Fisher-Halman Road and Herb Street, and Fisher-Halman Road and University Drive over capacity in the PMP tower at an overall level. And then the corridor, the Ira Needles Boulevard corridor from Herb Street to University Avenue, so primarily in the northbound direction in the AM peak hour and in the PMP tower in the southbound direction and for the west approach at most of the roundabouts. So based on these capacity constraints, WSP made a number of additional roadway improvement recommendations which significantly improved the forecasted delays and capacity of these intersections. So I'll go through some of these improvements. So this is with planned roadway improvements plus the additional recommendations. So at Herbsville Road and Columbia Street, an additional eastbound and westbound through lane, an additional northbound through lane, a southbound right turn lane, and an eastbound right turn lane. At Columbia Street and Fisher-Halman Road, an additional eastbound right turn lane. At Fisher-Halman Road and Herb Street, a southbound right turn lane. At Fisher-Halman and University, our second westbound left turn lane. At University and Ira Needles Boulevard, a northbound and southbound bypass lane and an eastbound right turn lane. We also proposed connecting the boardwalk to Herb Street with the connection being a roundabout, and that connection would divert some traffic from the Ira Needles corridor. So with these proposed improvements, as we can see on the right side of the graph, much of the anticipated delays are anticipated to significantly reduce, and all of the intersections, which is very important, are forecasted to operate below capacity. And now I'll pass it on to Jay, who will talk about active transportation.
Thank you. So regarding active transportation, what I thought I would start with is just give you a quick overview of the process that we went through to get to some of the potential recommendations that we provided this evening. First of all, we started by mapping the existing and proposed or planned active transportation routes. So this includes what's out there today based on data that was provided, as well as what is in some of your other policy plans that's planned for future through cycling master plans, trail master plans, and so on. Our next step was to go out and do some inventory throughout the study area, look at where some of the opportunities lie, where some of the challenges lie, and took that information to the public as part of the first PIC to allow residents, stakeholders, to tell us things that we missed in our mapping, things that we were not aware of, because we know through all of the work that we do across the province in active transportation that the folks that are out there riding and walking every day really know the lay of the land very well. And also to provide thoughts regarding potential improvements. So following that, we worked on developing some potential improvements, and again, took that out into the field and looked at those possibilities in the field, took those to the second PIC, and then following that, we did make a couple of adjustments to our preliminary recommendations. So as far as the consultation goes, we did hear a number of, a variety of comments from stakeholders and residents, and highlighted on the screen are just a few of them, a few of the key ones. And I think probably the two most important things that we heard over and over again, number one was for cyclists especially, was more separation. So it's really, over the last 10 to 15 years, we've really been seeing a desire for those that want to ride their bicycles to become more separated from traffic. And I think that part of this is coming from the fact that instead of just the, I'll call them the spandex-clad riders out there, we're seeing more and more people that are taking up cycling, they're interested in trying it, and that's probably our largest group that we're trying to attract. We call them the interested but concerned, and they represent about 60% of the cycling population. So we have a big opportunity there by providing more separation in the facilities to attract those kinds of users. And then second, second sort of big theme was related to connectivity, and this applies both to the on-road environment as well as the off-road environment. So fixing those little gaps in the on-road network where the bicycle lanes perhaps end, and how do we connect them again at the next leg. Also, the trail system. So there are a number of gaps in the trail system that provide or create inconvenience for users, and in some cases, it may result in the choice to take the car instead of take the trail because it just, you know, adds that little bit more to their trip. And then finally, connectivity regarding sidewalks. So again, those little missing gaps in the sidewalks, and we didn't look at them all as a part of this study, but they, you know, there's something to be identified further, and especially around schools. So along the theme of promoting active school travel, making sure that there are connected routes to the schools is very important. There are a number of planned reconstruction projects that are currently underway or in the planning process, and some of those do include active transportation facilities. A number of them include active transportation facilities, and some perhaps need to wait until the next time they're improved to take it perhaps to the next level of separation in terms of active transportation. And there are a number that are going to be going through the planning stages, and this is the opportunity to start to incorporate those recommendations. In terms of active transportation improvement strategies, there's a variety of strategies that are out there, and this is, I think, for you perhaps a bit more of a reminder than I'll call it a wake-up call because you're already doing all of these in various parts of your city. So providing separated facilities. Example on Columbia, you're doing a fantastic job with the new separated facilities on Columbia, and we really think that that's an example going forward as to how to treat some of your arterial roads. Shown on the left-hand side of the screen are examples, three different examples of separated facilities. One is the one-way cycle track, so slightly raised above the curb. This is very similar to your Columbia example. The middle one from Calgary is a two-way cycle track, so that's on a one-way road, and it's providing two-way cycling for those sections of roadway. And then the third, right here, again, in Waterloo, is a wonderful example of how to connect below a really significant barrier being the expressway. So a separated facility away from traffic allows pedestrians and cyclists to make it from the uptown area over to Conestoga Mall. Enhancing traffic calming in neighborhoods, it's about slowing cars down, it's about creating a better pedestrian and cycling environment in the neighborhoods, attracts young children and experienced riders and pedestrians to take active modes. Incorporating active transportation during the development approval process, again, this is something that you're currently working on, but continuing to work and strive that way by providing connections, making sure that the sidewalks are connected to the main fronts of buildings, especially in those locations, commercial plazas and so on, where you have a number of users that are relying on transit to get to their shopping destinations, so making sure that they can make that last 100 meters from the sidewalk to the front door and back to the transit stop again. And then making sure that you've got facilities at those places for cyclists, for example, to stop and park their bikes and so on. Improving pedestrian and cyclist crossings. So this is particularly important of some of your main roads, for instance, where trails, they come and they end at an arterial road. You can see the trail connection on the other side, but how do you get there without having to walk an extra 500 meters down to the next intersection and cross at the intersection? There are some new tools that are available now. We've got a couple of illustrations here. The top one is called the cycle, sorry, the cross-ride, which allows a cyclist to cross through an intersection without having to dismount and be in violation of the Highway Traffic Act. And again, you've got an example right here, just a couple blocks away on your Laurel Trail. So, you know, looking to put more of those in. And then more recently, the introduction or reintroduction of the pedestrian crossover provides another opportunity to create crossings, but perhaps without the same level of investment as a full pedestrian signal, as in the top photo. Prioritizing active routes to school, so continuing to work with, continuing to work with the transportation services, and, you know, we know that that's successful, they've documented that it's successful, so continuing on with that, and especially making sure that, again, you've got sidewalk connectivity in and around your schools. That 500-meter radius around the school is really important, critical for active routes to school. And similar to that, improving sidewalk connectivity. So it's about identifying where those gaps are, prioritizing them, because it does create a long list of gaps when you start to look at all those little pieces, and making sure, you know, prioritizing them around schools, around senior centers, around medical centers, and then widening the narrowest sidewalks at the time it is to improve them. So indicated on this figure are some of the strategies or some of the possibilities in terms of the improvements that we've noted. And again, similar to David, I won't go through all of them, but I'll just hit a few highlights. So looking at the arterial roads, so the idea of providing more separation along your arterial roads and really looking at Columbia as an example going forward. So you've got separated cycling facilities, and you may have multi-use trails on both sides behind the curb, or a multi-use trail on one side and a sidewalk on the other. So it's providing choice for the variety of users. Improving trail connectivity, so for instance, some of the hydro, a couple of the hydro corridor trails, we think provide great opportunities. There are a couple of gaps in your Keatsway Hydro Corridor, for example, if we can just get those few pieces closed, suddenly you've got an east-west corridor that can bring you across those gap areas. Similar with the Bennington Gate Hydro Corridor. Um and as similar with the 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 Bennington Gate Hydro Corridor. Providing new trails, and I think one of the most exciting things that um that we've identified in terms of um trail work is the potential to use the the north-south hydro corridor from Columbia right down um through the new um employment lands and then down uh connecting to the boardwalk. So that provides a great opportunity to create almost a a cycling highway, an active transportation highway, if you will. And when it's connected with um the remainder of the corridor, it starts to create that that connection towards the uptown area as well. Uh crossing improvements, we've identified a number of locations um where uh they need to be further evaluated at potential locations for those crossing improvements, be they for cross-rides or for mid-block pedestrian signals or for pedestrian crossovers. And major intersection improvements. So is it possible, are there locations where we can shorten the pedestrian crossing distance uh to make it easier for pedestrians to get across in the time that they have available? And obviously, this has to be balanced with the other transportation needs. Uh one opportunity that we that was identified at our last PIC that's outside the study area is um the connection from the end of Laurelwood uh um towards the TransCanada Trail uh by Columbia Lake. We understand that this is a project that you've looked at before, but looking at it in with the lens of this, the Waterloo West Side Study, we feel that it's a great opportunity if we make that connection, really to bring in all the people from the northwest side of the city as well as the growing, you know, population growth that's going to take place in that area, bring them right down through the university and connect them right down into into uptown Waterloo. And then finally, um just wanted to uh to briefly touch on Platinum, Platinum Drive. So that's a project that's currently in the in the planning stages and and here's an example of um, I'll call it doing it, doing it right in terms of active transportation, and this is the proposed cross-section. So you've got your vehicle travel lanes, uh it has a separated cycling facility that's slightly above the curb, generous boulevard space that provides good uh good space for trees to grow, helps to create a a more pleasing environment, uh shade, some shade for users, as well as a sidewalk on one side and multi-use trail on the other. So again, it's about providing, uh active transportation is about providing choices. And I'll now flip it over to Denny who will talk about transit.
Okay, I just, we're already at ten minutes over time. I'm just wondering, how much longer is the, how much more good information are we going to see tonight?
Don't worry, it's uh, I'll try to keep it short. The next kind of, the next couple of slides are a bit meaty, but I won't go through every single little detail. Um so what we heard at the first Public Information Centre was the general um general consensus in the form of transit, um more transit routes needed, I guess that includes accessibility trend to transit, walking distance to transit. Buses aren't typically too attractive until about, people will walk up to about two hundred, three hundred meters to a bus stop just to get on a bus, but no longer that, no longer than that until it's usually typically a higher mode of transit, like light rail transit or subway. Um another thing we heard was the inclusion of full-day transit service, then spending the hours from five AM all the way to one AM, things like that in the major metropolitan areas like Toronto. And of course, more direct service. People want to get from A to B, they don't want to go from A to B while transferring at C, D, E, N, F. So transit facts for West Waterloo also includes that GRT has focused on this particular area as an as a growth opportunity. And right now, there are currently twelve bus routes and three I Express routes that operate in this area, a couple of major bus terminals such as Conestoga Mall and the Boardwalk. And future transit initiatives that we've kind of taken out from learning from the members of public at PICs and based on our review of other transit systems are, you know, more business development kind of things such as short-trip fares, seasonal event fares, small things such as investing or looking into battery electric buses, new transit initiatives, barrier-free, and of course, as Jay had mentioned, the inclusion of active transportation. I mean, GRT now currently has bike racks on all of its buses, but to get from, but to to get from home to the bus stop, you may have to ride a bike or walk, put the bike on the bus, then you can go with it, go along with your transit route, and you can get from, get from your last mile using the bike again. So it's kind of a, it's all built together as part of a multimodal environment. And other things that we've looked at include infrastructure improvements with the inclusion of Ion LRT. Now Waterloo has a regional rapid transit system that connects Kitchener all the way into Waterloo. You can use that as a hub system. Similar to what has been done in Toronto, there are very many bus terminals at each of these stations, they can be used as a focal point and a catalyst catalyst for development. And further, there are things that GRT has included in its future service plan in terms of connectivity, such as increasing the number of I Express limited stop routes, so getting you from A to B faster. Um realigning routes to more of a grid system based on Ion, so keeping buses from infiltrating into neighborhoods such as staying on Herbsville, Iron Needles, so forth. And of course, providing more and more frequent service. And this is a thing that we see in in more suburban systems such as York Region Transit, who has invest, who is investing now into a system of fifteen minutes as a minimum frequency on major streets. So things like that will do small, small things and incremental improvements to improve transit ridership. However, there are some areas that that aren't possible to serve using this conventional fixed route transit, and these are, this is what, this is, these are areas where alternative delivery options come into come into play. And things like community bus routes, home-to-hub services, subsidized taxis, or ride-sharing are all four different kinds of options. For example, a community bus route may just connect a residential subdivision to the closest Ion station or to the closest um transit terminal where you can transfer to a more higher frequency route. Similar things are done in the home-to-hub and subsidized taxi, except they're done with smaller vehicles. For subsidized taxi, the region or Grand River Transit would choose to subsidize taxi service and they would take people directly between A to B. And the same thing is done in the ride-sharing mode where you can use business development as a measure, so with strategic partnerships with things like Uber or Lyft to do the exact same thing. So I'm not going to go into every little bit of detail on the alternative delivery, but it, these are things that have been explored by other transit systems in Ontario and across the globe. So York Region Transit is implementing strong transit-oriented development policies. This is something that Waterloo can look at along Ion, where York Region has a series of bus rapid transit routes and particularly along Highway Seven, there's been a spur of development as a result of bus rapid transit. And the same thing could will happen for light rail transit. Historically, for light rail transit, development has been a lot stronger than bus rapid transit. And things like improve improving accessibility and making fare systems easier, which we've seen in GRT in the past with the Easy Go system. And other things like Transport for London, who has made strategic partnerships with others, with uh not not things that are particularly known for transit such as Scrabble and Nike to increase social media presence and that know of transit, because once people know about transit and the options that are available to them, they will consider them. The next two slides are just maps of the twenty eighteen GRT service plan. The light blue areas that you see in this map are areas that are typically, that are currently not served by transit and are kind of difficult to serve by transit. So these particular areas would be ones that would be can good candidates for alternative alternative service delivery, where a car or a bus can, a smaller bus, not a conventional large bus that travels on large roads, would go right to people's doors, they can pick them up, they would go to the closest transit hub, for example, and then you can transfer to a larger service or be right at your destination. And GRT has outlined the west, the uh the residential subdivision and area and the Platinum Drive area as areas where they would like to put in transit as soon as possible. Particularly, my understanding is that the employment district of Platinum Drive is, we have to get transit in there right before, even before they start, because once transit isn't in there and it's high-frequency, people know that it is an option. And this slide is the exact same slide, the exact same map, except we talk about which routes are more local in nature and which routes are more expressive in nature. So for example, we can look at routes that can directly connect West to Waterloo to the to the Ion LRT as a transfer option. So following this council meeting, the next steps of our study will be to table the existing report to accommodate input from count, from today's council meeting. We will post a revised report on the city's website for thirty days and incorporate all that input into a final report. And we will post that final report onto the city's website by August twenty seventh, and council will consider the final report on September tenth, twenty eighteen. So. So everything, Phil?
Okay, thank you. Um, I just for my benefit, where where will we find this uh draft report, Phil?
Uh, there is a link in the memo. Uh, okay, it's, and it was, um, the ad we put in the Chronicle also had the link to the website.
All online. Okay, thank you. Uh, councillor Whaley was first, then councillor Freeman?
Well, that was a boatload full of information. Should I say an ion train full of information? And uh I have to say that, I guess since the end of the Second World War, the car has been king in Waterloo, in Canada in general. But if there's one place that uh this long reign can end, it could be here in Waterloo. And uh the reason I say that is the council has, one of its pillars of its master plan is multimodal transportation, which has brought you to our door. Uh, we've, we're gold standard uh uh bike-friendly and we're probably going to be the first platinum city, wouldn't you agree councillor Freeman? Uh, and we have a council willing to spend money on multimodal transportation. But it was interesting that your 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 discussion tonight was focused to begin with on-road improvements, so I want to talk a little bit about that for my two minutes. First of all, you've talked about a lot of improvements, and have you got any sense of what the capital costs of all these improvements are? And if not, is, do you at least have a sense of how we'll pri- prioritize going through uh the the long, long list of changes so that we can get our, the biggest roadblocks taken care of first?
Through you, mayor, to councillor Whaley. So most of the improvements are already in the capital budget. They may be in the the next ten years, they're in the first ten years, and some of them are out in the next ten years. So depending on um how quickly we see growth, some of those could be advanced, so the, there there's some impact, I guess, by moving things forward, but it means we can delay some other projects. So we we've accounted for most of the the improvements. Some of the additional improvements, like a an additional left-turn lane or a a right-turn slip-off, they're fairly minor in cost. So we think uh like over time, we, again, we will build these into budgets. So some of them are quite a distance away, so they're outside the current ten-year budget.
One of the slides uh that you had there tonight had to do with uh speed limits and and how how the speed limits impact the traffic movements. Earlier today, it was an interesting discussion, we, there was a discussion in the council about uh considering at least the idea of uh bringing down all uh road speeds by ten kilometers per hour in the Waterloo. It was a thought brought forward today that was, brought a lot of comment and interest. How would this affect uh the road improvement plan? Is it a good idea or is it something that, in your vast experience, is something we should be wary about?
Probably turn that over to the expert from WSP. I have a thought, but I'll let Dave answer first.
Oh, uh, well, well, I guess, well, one thing with more congestion, uh road speeds naturally, typ- typically, uh cars, uh there there is not enough space to to move fast, so the 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 speed limits uh naturally like slow down. But uh it wasn't something specifically we we were investigating in uh in this study.
Something, something we as councillors are interested in investigating because one of the biggest problems we face as councillors and as mayor is people complaining to us about speeding in the neighborhoods, speeding, 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 everybody's speeding. So one of the suggestions that came forward by councillor Freeman was to have an an overall uh uh reduction of speed by ten kilometers an hour. We didn't, we we know there's a lot of information about, uh, you know, probably available, but I look to you experts for your initial thoughts on such an idea.
Um, so it's kind of interesting, when you do traffic modeling, um if you increase the speed, you actually increase the capacity of the road. That works great for highways, but it doesn't work so well for city streets. So philosophically, w- we we look to, it, it's not a problem to slow cars down, it means there may be a little more congestion, it may take a little longer for people to get to work, but it makes the road safer for the other road users like pedestrians and cyclists. So it is a philosophical balance. Uh on on the high-speed arterial roads, uh those are the very big challenges because they're they're designed to move a lot of cars. So we may um over time want to redesign some of those roads to actually slow cars down or to provide safer crossings. Or what what's happening in Toronto now, because they have a lot of high-speed roads, they're seeing uh an upswing in pedestrian cyclist collisions, whereas in other areas around the world where they've adopted Vision Zero, they've been successful at reducing those. Um, we're, we're quite fortunate in Waterloo region, we don't see fatalities very often. Uh, one is too many, but again, it's a balance. So are we going to favor the car, are we going to favor uh making a city livable? So these are a challenge that we have to grapple with, so.
And next up councillor Freeman, then councillor Veith, then councillor Henry.
If it's okay, I have a few questions.
Go ahead.
Um, so just with regard to this next steps, um I'm, I'm hoping we can somehow or another slow this process down a little bit from the perspective of increasing the number of public meetings. Two public meetings, it it just doesn't feel like enough. The emails that we're getting from people on the west side is that they don't feel as though they've been engaged and um and I, like, I recognize that this is not, it's not a planning application, so the notification process is very different. And and so I think that folks um anticipate that the public process and the notification of the public process would be similar to a planning process. So if you knew that they were interested, you would somehow or another email them and tell them that there was a meeting coming. And so I just think there's some value in being a little bit more purposeful, at least doing at least one more public meeting on this and and using some of our different communications tools to try to get people out to talk about this. When we roll back the clock and talk about how it is that this this process came about, it was because there was a lot of pressure happening on the west side with regard to new development coming online, in particular, the Costco and the city's employment lands. And um I downloaded the link from the memorandum and was reading it, and I was having troubles understanding um how how things were forecast, how how the future build-out of all of those employment lands and so on were forecast and and um and and the relationship in terms of the um the recommendations and the transportation modeling between a lot of the road improvements that happened between when we started this work and where we are now. So, for example, we've allocated a significant resource to widening Columbia Street. So how that's utilized in this model, the widening, and the region also widened Iron Needles. So I would like to better understand all of those aspects of this report and and those build-outs. Like, for example, a new medical center has been approved and started construction in the Boardwalk, so forecasting those traffic flows and and those pieces. And I, and and it's quite probable that you accounted for all of that, but I think that folks just don't have a sense of that. I I don't, and I'd like to. Um, the other piece that I wanted to get a better understanding of, I couldn't find in the report, it might be there, but what percentage of mode shift did the model account for with regard to the implementation of some of the pieces around uh active transportation investments and multimodal transportation use? Um, because some of the slides on the multimodal things are 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 things that people are doing, I didn't think we had to point to other municipalities because they're actually happening here. Um, so I I was having troubles understanding that. And then, um, I think too, like, I'd really like this report to come in a very detailed format to the WCAT committee. And um, and I actually think it would be of value to have um Ms. Salvini at that so that she can present the city's perspective on the peer review, so what was done, what the city was looking for, how the report addressed the original scope of work and that kind of thing. Um, and and yeah, I just, I just feel like a final report coming to us September tenth is just, is not going to allow enough time for the public to really feel that they've been embraced in this study. Um, so I'm hopeful that we can, and, you know, these are a lot of questions, and and maybe the easiest way to answer them is is to do a memo or something back to council. I mean, by all means, you can take a stab at it, sorry, I know I said a lot.
Through you, Mayor Jaworski, and to councillor Freeman's good points, and um as staff, we are um very conscious about the amount of information that we brought forward tonight. I think in hindsight, we probably should have done a little better job boiling it down, so for that I apologize. But um it also illustrates the complexity of this effort, and I think council appreciates that as well. And um certainly to your point, councillor Freeman, um the reason why we didn't want to just um give this to council tonight to approve is for many of the reasons you mentioned. There's, uh, if there's interest in unpacking in more detail, a lot of the components, this staff will certainly take the will certainly take the time to do that. I think with Ms. Salvini's expertise, she's going to, in very easy-to-understand terms, explain the results of the modeling to any advisory committees or members of the public who haven't yet had a chance to have a look at the document. So I think your suggestion is a good one about a memo, and Phil and I will put our minds to that.
The other thing I really couldn't understand is a lot of the recommendations in this report are recommendations for the region, and they're not recommendations for our city. And so to achieve these outcomes, I don't understand, or at least I would like to understand whether or not the regions embrace this study as a council and whether or not they've put some of these changes in their capital plans. Because I think we need to give a really clear picture to people that live on the west side in terms of what is going to happen and who's responsible for seeing it through.
Through you mayor Jaworski, to councillor Freeman. So the region have had staff member on the project team. We have had several teleconferences going through all the region's capital project and our own capital project list. So they're very aligned, as I was saying earlier, the, some of the projects that, based on the region's transportation master plan. So we're not talking about huge improvements over what was modeled in the region's transportation master plan. So to answer, to short answer it, is they are, they will be accommodated in capital budget. So the region has been consulted, so there's no direct impact on capital budgets at this time. So on a, this is a long-term plan. So within each 10-year capital budget, we will budget for each of the projects that are identified. They will be prioritized and based on growth. So we continue to monitor traffic. So again, it is a moving target. Growth may or may not happen as quickly as what was forecast in the model. So these are things we have to balance on a continual basis. So each year, traffic growth is monitored, and, you know, if it's happening faster than we had originally planned, some projects get reprioritized. So that's how it's done.
So my final question is with regard to the Wilmot line, all of our favorite subjects. When this report started, one of the significant things was that this report would give consideration to the Wilmot line. We've always said that if it exceeded 1,000 cars per day, we were going to do something. We've never said what that something is. And in addition to that, I think we've backed ourselves into a corner where we've essentially said that in some regard, the city's going to try to protect the environmentally sensitive wetland area that resides in the heart of the Wilmot line. I don't know how we can achieve that. And if this report is not going to address that issue, then I think we need to be forthright about it at the beginning of the report. And if it is going to comment on it or, you know, be forward on an answer, I think that the township has to be a significant part of that conversation before we go and publish something. So I, I mean, I don't know what it looks like, but I, I think there was an expectation that in some way or another, by analyzing the traffic on the west side, the city of Waterloo is going to do something to try to limit the folks that chose to drive on the Wilmot line. That was what I think people understood was going to happen, and I don't know if this report achieves that, but I didn't see it in the report thus far.
So to answer your question councillor Freeman, the modeling, I mean, we're not, we're not having any connections to Wilmot line, we're not increasing the number of connections, there's no additional opportunities to access the Wilmot line. Particularly where the development is occurring, as you go north, the existing connections to Wilmot line are still Conservation Drive, Wyman Drive. So that hasn't changed. The modeling has concluded that there's going to be, there could be some increase in traffic on the Wilmot line, but not in a significant way that's directly attributed to this development, because there's no way to connect to it directly. So you're right, this has always been a burning issue, but we struggle with that it's not our road, they don't want us to connect to it. We've done our best to, you know, discourage traffic from going to the Wilmot line. People still choose to do it, but they're going to get there in a very long circuitous way. So we're not seeing significant increase in traffic on the Wilmot line.
I see Mr. Rapp has further information.
Thank you mayor Jaworski. To add further comments to Phil's comments, when I go back in time, the biggest fear was that through development and poor infrastructure on the west side, transportation infrastructure, people would rely on or be forced to go to the Wilmot line as a poor second choice, if you will. And I think the best way to protect the Wilmot line in its current state is to make sure we go through a study like this and budget for both at the city and regional level for proper transportation infrastructure, so that people don't look for alternative routes, that they'll use the easier routes through the urban area as opposed to finding secondary choices because we haven't provided for proper intersections and road windings elsewhere on the west side. So I think that's what we're really hoping for with this study, was to combine all of our efforts, make sure it's under one single methodology and we align our capital budgets so that the Wilmot line in its state isn't where people want to go.
Excellent, thank you.
If I could just respond to that, I agree with that statement, I just think the report has to be purposeful to address that, so that it's clear that the city of Waterloo has done, in this report, all it can do to provide transportation options to citizens that, where they would choose city streets over the Wilmot line. And I just think, right now, I didn't see it in the report where that was addressed to that extent, and I think it needs to. And there's more than just Wyman Road and Conservation, Erbs Road is a big connection. So I, you know, it exists, and just like all of our roads, people will choose where they want to be when we can't control that.
Councillor Veeth, then Henry, then councillor Durrell.
Through you mayor Jaworski.
We're going to head now on this topic.
I only have one question. Thank you for the report, it's really a lot of reading. I dropped into the, on a small screen, I find it hard to read. I dropped into the open house on June 5th at the Rec Center, and one comment, major comment from a couple of people that I talked to that live over there, was how is putting a roundabout at Laurel Wood and Fisher-Halman at the library, how is that going to make life easier for pedestrians? Because apparently, no, I just, I ride my bike or I drive through there, I've never really walked in there, but apparently it's high pedestrian traffic. And I think that's something that the citizens are going to have to be convinced of, that a roundabout is the best way for pedestrians to get through there. So if you could just address that. And one more thing, when I do, I do ride my bike from the south to the north along there, along Fisher-Halman and between Columbia and the library is nasty. There's no, it's just, the trail just kind of, or the, I don't know if there's a bike lane, it just, yeah, it's just nasty. So I was just wondering what, if there's a timeline on fixing that up. But I've had people ask me about that too, they ride with their children and their grandchildren along there, and it's, again, it's nasty.
Sorry, just your second question, so was that on Fisher-Halman or on Erbsville Road?
Fisher-Halman.
Fisher-Halman. Yeah, so the region has capital improvements planned for Fisher-Halman north of Columbia. So that'll include multi-use trails and better facilities for pedestrians and cyclists.
Are you including the, like, a roundabout, or is that a separate thing?
Yeah, and then I'll address the roundabout too. So we've made a lot of advances in roundabout design. The early roundabouts, some of the first constructed in the region were primarily designed for cars, and we found challenges for pedestrians particularly. The newer designs, you can see how they modified some of them, they moved the crosswalks back so that a car can actually stop before going, or, you know, where the pedestrian is crossing, just better visibility. So the roundabout design has come forward to accommodate pedestrians in a better way. Again, they do slow cars down, so that makes it easier to cross. So that's part of the challenge with some of the roads like Fisher-Halman, because it's more rural in nature almost, cars tend to drive fast. So as we urbanize these areas, then we can do, like, make lanes a little narrower and so forth like that to reduce speeds. So if we reduce speeds, it improves the safety for pedestrians.
Would it be possible to get something up? Maybe there is already, I don't know, on the regional website about roundabouts and maybe about the new designs and maybe what this might look like and how great it will be for pedestrians?
And most of the roundabouts have been re-signed, they put up signs to say yield to pedestrians. So the early roundabout, it was pedestrian that had to yield to cars. So there's been a change, and again, getting the message out to drivers and everyone. So by consistent signage across the roundabouts in all, across the region, we're seeing improvements there.
Okay, and I agree with councillor Freeman about maybe opening up, opening or delaying this a bit and having a little more public information for folks. Thank you.
Next up councillor Henry, then councillor Durrell.
Thank you mayor Jaworski, and thank you to the team for the work that's gone on here. I know I had the pleasure of chairing the formal public meeting for the Costco application. It was an interesting evening, and I know this is certainly one of the elements that come out of it. And I imagine, as is often the case, that many people left our chamber with various views of what it is we'd done and various views and expectations of what it was that was going to come back from all of this. And that's always the case on most things, that that happens, even when we try really hard to be clear about what we're doing and why, and what you can reasonably expect to see at the outcome of this. Councillor Freeman raised a question around the buy-in of the region. So, I mean, that was on my list. I'd observed that the vast majority of roads here are regional roads, so it's not going to be our decision. It's going to be, as best as possible, our recommendation on all of those. So I have a couple of higher-level, you know, the Wilmot line was another one on my list. A couple of higher-level, you know, questions on this. And one is a basic question of, do we think that we can build our way out of car congestion on the west side? I think some people in the public think we can. I would be curious to ask the project team and our staff if they think that it's reasonable to expect we could build our way out of car congestion on the west side of Waterloo.
So I think the short answer is no. That's the basic philosophy from our transportation master plan in 2011, that we couldn't build our way out of congestion problems. We do need to change people's habits, we do need to get people to rely less on the automobile. So part of the philosophy with the multimodal study is what can we do to encourage people to choose the alternative forms of transportation? So it's a two-way, it's a partnership. We can come up with philosophy and so forth, but we still need to get citizens to engage. So I think over time, we're seeing some improvements. The last region transportation master plan showed some shift to cycling and walking and transit. There's still, vast majority of people choose to drive. So we still have that, you know, tough statistic to try to change. As Jay mentioned, by making cycling facilities feel safer, we, you know, more people are willing to try it. The stats, excuse me, from Share the Road, 60% of the population of Ontario, they want to cycle, but they don't feel safe. So I think there's things we can do, and we are doing, and it'll take some time to see the benefit of that. But the short answer was no, we can't build our way out of congestion. We can tolerate more congestion, or we can take up more land with widening roads, but I don't think that's the direction that, you know, this council decided to go with our transportation master plan in 2011. So we have to continue to do what we're doing and encourage more people to use the alternative forms of transportation.
So two things arising from that, and I appreciate that. That's, I know where I am, and it was where council was, I hope it's where the next council continues to be, because it's the only sane fiscal position that's also a sane, livable cities position to have. Both of those things are true. So first, is this area of the city, in terms of the trend from less congestion to more congestion, unusual in the context of the region? Or is it reasonably consistent with the trend that we should expect to see between now and 2031 and beyond, across the city and across the region? Like, is this area, notwithstanding it's got fewer connections than some other parts, is this path uncommon, or is it relatively, you know, common within the broader regional picture?
So it's an interesting question, because it is unusual to put that density and that number of jobs on the extremity of a city as compared to more central. Like, in, you know, if you look at the region's official plan, their desire was to have more density along the central transit corridor, not to push this number of jobs out to the west side of the city. So it's a challenge to try to make that work. So as Danny showed with alternative transit by using smaller buses, shuttle buses, home to hub, various ways transit people have tried to deal with, how do you get people longer distance in low-density areas? So there are methods out there, but it's going to be different, it's not going to be a business as usual. So it is a challenge, and it is quite different than elsewhere in the region, I believe.
So I mean, that's sort of highlights why we do continue to need to look at that, some improvements. But the other thing, I think it was Danny said, or maybe it was one of the other gentleman who presented, was, you know, comment around the balance between active transportation and car, you know, vehicular transportation. And Phil, I did send you a note about this a couple of weeks ago, and thanks for getting back to me quickly, I think this forum was helpful for that. What in your mind, or in staff's mind, should that balance be between widening the road to allow a few more cars to be able to get through in 15 seconds rather than 18 or 19 seconds in terms of delay? And the ability of a pedestrian to reasonably cross that intersection in a time that feels comfortable and safe, or cyclists can cross that space? So what do you think, what does staff think, should that balance be? Because I wasn't hearing a clear direction around what that balance should be out of the study, and I think we should have a sense of what that balance is, if not here, then certainly in our update to our TMP.
Certainly my philosophy is to favor the more vulnerable road user, to give them a better chance to prioritize them as opposed to more cars. So that's kind of how we're trying to work, we're trying to build that kind of system, but we're also trying to balance the needs of all our citizens. So there's no easy answer, and to make changes takes time.
Mayor Jaworski, I could just add a brief comment. And councillor Henry, I think it speaks to your earlier point about our span of control over this transportation network. Largely these are regional roads we're talking about here, but the opportunity for AT and the consulting team nicely illustrated it tonight, are some really strategic trail connections, north-south through the Hydro Corridor, along with our Collector Bypass Road that is in the DC bylot, that's already, you know, earmarked for DC money, and the Platinum Drive connection. And we have a lot of control on how we design those. The question is how they link and they cross regional infrastructure, and that's the piece we want to work closely with our friends at the region to make sure that we're achieving the goals we want to see locally to get people out of cars and move safely across those busy regional roads.
And that was certainly my, you know, top question to the regional transportation, you know, head when he was here with the RTMP, around those connections, particularly through intersections. But I think it would be helpful if when council does eventually receive this study and recommendations, that we have real clarity on the message that we're sending to ourselves, but particularly the message that we want to send to the region in terms of, you know, priority. You know, if for them to be able to fund, you know, a bunch of crossing, trail crossings, you know, mid-block between, you know, across their roads, they have to push out one of these road improvements, you know, that's forecast, you know, by another year or two to do that. My sense is we would say that that's the choice they should make, to be able to prioritize safer active transportation connections, and that would be a better bang for the buck than getting an extra turn lane one year. than getting an extra turn lane one year earlier, or two years earlier. So I think as an outcome of this, one of the things that we should have is some real clarity on the marching orders for the region, so that we can all be talking about that. And the mayor has something very solid to take back to regional council, notwithstanding that there's a staff member that they have on this committee. I think multi-level can get us to multimodal a lot better than one individual on a committee.
And active transportation was a key discussion point at the region as the region's reviewing its transportation master plan. And that's something that certainly several of us on council felt it could be even more put into it into the coming years, and the staff are accommodating that. Last up, Counselor Durrell.
All the questions have been asked. My question was around the region, and it's been very well answered. I guess I just, for me, it's a lot of information. I don't know how else you'd do it. I think you did a great job. It was nice to hear from all three spaces, kind of rolling it out in their own way. It's a lot of information for us to process now. You know, it's too bad the two West End councillors aren't here today because, you know, those are two opinions that I would like to hear. But I guess we'll hear it throughout the summer, and I look forward to seeing you back in September. Thanks for the hard work.
Seeing no further questions. There's nothing to approve. There you go. But thank you anyways. Thanks, guys. Thanks, everyone. Thanks, Julia. Okay, the formal public meeting, A, originally scheduled for 70 King Street North, is not happening. It's delayed. 10B. This is a formal public meeting to consider zone change application Z-1806, removal of holding provision 145 Columbia Street West, 145 Columbia, Waterloo Corp. Any persons who want further notice of this application, including passage of any bylaw, should sign the appropriate register in the binder located at the desk at the rear of the council chambers. There is more than one tonight, so please make sure you sign the right one. Will the clerk please advise council the method used to give notice of the meeting and the dates notice was given?
Notice was advertised in the Waterloo Chronicle on April 26, 2018, and mailed or emailed on April 25, 2018, to all property owners within 120 meters of the subject property and to all public agencies.
There is no presentation on this tonight, but the planner is available for all your questions and answers. Does anyone have any questions? Seeing none. Is there anyone else present here tonight who wish to speak to this application? You have no registered delegations. Seeing none. If there are no more delegations, this formal public meeting is concluded, and the application now open to council for a, for a motion and debate. Counselor Henry with comment, and seconded by Counselor Weth.
A couple of things. First, this certainly has been a long-running file from the previous council with an application that originally came in predating the Northdale Plan. So that's why there's a little bit of difference in terms of how this looks from some others' council. You know, won some concessions as part of, you know, dealing with this package to bring it closer to Northdale, but not all the way to Northdale. I'd like to thank staff for really hammering away at the Section 37 for Phase 2. It is really important that the applicant understand that we mean business and we're serious, and this Section 37 agreement gives us a pretty heavy hammer. I don't think we've wielded this heavy hammer on the details of it before. This is a pretty heavy one, so I expect that that means we will get at least a lead silver building, I guess they're connected, I'm not sure whether that counts as one or two, out of this. The one comment I have, I observe that the applicant intends to submit a zone change application to seek further density on this site through the staff report. That's not what's before us tonight, but I would simply say, as the applicant goes through making those initial complete applications to the city and gets comments before it comes to council, it would help them to know that in considering whether these lands are appropriate for even more density, I, and I would think council, would be interested in considering the function of Phase 1 relative to the approved density on that parcel of land, and that the applicant would have to demonstrate to my satisfaction that it is being used as approved in terms of its density.
Any further commentary? Counselor Whaley.
A question of staff.
Go ahead.
When I saw Icon 1 being built, I thought surely that's the biggest building I've ever seen in Waterloo. Doesn't it look like it's the biggest building? And imagine to have, even though the one behind it is smaller, the same look and same feel, and that one property having these remarkable four towers. It's really overwhelming. My question is with respect to the public art. That was part of the bonusing plan. You gave me a figure, I think, of $250,000 for public art. Where can the public expect to see this public art, Ms. Durrell?
Through you, Mayor Jaworski. We have taken a $250,000 letter of credit for the public art. It was actually through the condominium registration of 330 Philip Street. We have been told that the art has been installed at 330 Philip Street, but in order to release the money, and there is a deadline to provide to us certain documentation to demonstrate that it satisfies the bonusing agreement in terms of public art.
Laura, can you just move the microphone a bit closer to yourself?
So there is a, I think the deadline is December 1st, 2018, to provide us with some further documentation that demonstrates that what does exist on the site, that the applicant is telling us is public art satisfies the criteria in the bonusing agreement. And if it does, then we would be releasing the $250,000 back to the applicant, or potentially just a portion thereof, and retaining the remainder. So that's sort of being dealt with actually through a different process, being the, a separate supplementary site plan agreement.
I think the key word for me in public art is that it's public, that it's available to the public, that it can be seen by the public. And that's where I have a worry, that this art could be, for example, inside the building at 330 Philip Street and not accessible to anybody other than residents. So if there's some way that we can ensure that the public is going to see the result of their density bonusing, I would really appreciate that.
Thank you. Seeing no further commentary, I'll call the question. Oh, hold on. We need some further information from you on our decision-making for the government.
I got to read the thing. Yeah, okay, I wasn't sure about that for a holding provision. So the motion that I have moved said, having considered all written and oral submissions from the public and stakeholders, and considered the professional opinions of planning staff, council approves zoning bylaw amendment Z-1806, 145 Columbia Street North, in accordance with Section 7 recommendations of IPPW 2018-024 for the reasons specified in Section 6 conclusions of the report, close quote.
Thank you, Auctioneer Henry. All those in favor? It's all of us. Thank you. Thanks, Laura. This is a formal public meeting to consider official plan amendment number 19, zone change application Z-1803, North Bridge Holdings Inc., 255 Northfield Drive East. Any persons who want further notice of this application, including passage of any bylaw, should sign the appropriate register in the binder located at the back of the council chambers. There is more than one today. Will the clerk please advise council on the method used to give notice of the meeting and the dates notice was given?
Notice was advertised in the Waterloo Chronicle on June 7, 2018, and mailed or emailed on June 5, 2018, to all property owners within 120 meters of the subject property, to public agencies, to all persons who signed in or spoke at the informal public meeting held on March 5, 2018, and to all persons who requested further notice.
The planner, Joel Carter, will now give a brief overview of the application. Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor Jaworski, members of council. This is the formal public hearing for official plan amendment 19 and zone change Z-1803 for 255 Northfield Drive East, Urban Legend Developments Limited. This is actually Ms. Hardaker's file. She is on well today, so I will do my best to navigate council through this formal public meeting. The site is located at the corner of Bridge Street and Northfield, as indicated on the map. It's about 2.9 hectares in size, currently vacant. And there is, as council can see with the gray line shown through here, that this is a substantial hydro corridor that runs along the boundary of the property. To the north is commercial and industrial uses. Again, also to the west is industrial and commercial uses. To the east is residential, and to the south is Deer Run Park in this location, as well as lower-rise residential homes. The current official plan identifies the property as mixed-use neighborhood commercial, as a minor node, and has a special provision area 46 on it, with medium-density development up to 20 meters in height, and the zoning is MXC with a site-specific bylaw. The application, or the planning framework that's on the property was established in 2012. Prior to that time, the property was planned, the planned function of the property was medium-density residential and a minor corridor, and zoned accordingly as multiple residence six. In 2012, that was modified, tailored to a specific development proposal that was anchored by a food store. And what we see this evening is an application coming to bring the lands back to that medium-density residential designation for the most part, as well as a convenience-commercial component, and then again zoning the property to mixed-use R with convenience-commercial and site-specific zoning regulations. The subject lands are shown, so Northfield Drive here, Bridge Street. Multiple phases to the development. The initial phase is, in this section highlighted in the purple, with a six-story apartment building, mixed-use building with ground-floor retail in this location, followed by a second six-story apartment building. The convenience-commercial lands are indicated in this location, running under Bridge Street. And then the final phase is another six-story residential apartment building. The first-phase building is about 21.1 meters in height, contains about 929 square meters of commercial, 70 residential units, and 125 beds with a rooftop terrace. Phase 2, or Phase 1B, I should say, is 106 stories, 102 residential units, 184 beds. It's connected to the first building and has indoor amenity area as well as access to underground parking and is serviced for, or serviced by both the underground parking and surface parking. Phase 3 in this location is 116 residential units, 197 bedrooms, and again, has access to that underground parking. And finally, the commercial section in this area is three commercial pads, collectively 932 square meters, with one proposed building at the corner around 465-ish square meters, one drive-through proposed in the center of the site. And generally, the uses are anticipated to be restaurants, cafes, and financial-type services or similar-type convenience-commercial uses. A lot of considerations were evaluated through this application, including a long list of the existing items that were tailored through the original application or the application done in 2012. The recommendation is to move the property from an official plan perspective into mixed-use medium-density residential within Area A and to convenience-commercial within Area B, with various site-specific policies, including a high standard of urban design built form and streetscape, the requirements for lighting plans and noise studies, limited movements or restricted movements, vehicular movements to Bridge Street, pedestrian connections from Deer Run Park to Bridge and to Northfield, and a buffer slash berm along the South Lot Line adjacent to the residential homes. With respect to that limited or restricted vehicle movements to Bridge Street, that would be a no-left turn from the site onto Bridge Street. Sorry, just go back. So again, Area A is all the residential, and Area B is the commercial. With respect to the zoning, again, that Area A zoning it to MXR with a host of site specifics to allow the mixed-use commercial up to 1,000 square meters, a density of 300 bedrooms per hectare, maximum height of 20 meters with the one exception of 21.1 meters, and some architectural projections for rooftop enhancements, an amenity area requirement being added in, parking for residential at one space per unit, parking for the commercial at four spaces for 100 square meters, as well as a bicycle parking rate. And for the convenience-commercial, zoning that CC under bylaw 1418, maximum 1,000 square meters, generally 280 square meters in size with one unit being able to be increased to 465 square meters. No residential would be permitted. The minimum building height would be six meters to allow for a two-story appearance. Parking would be at 4.5 per 100 square meters, and one drive-through would be permitted with certain restrictions or setback requirements, limiting it to ensure that it's offset from the surrounding residential neighborhood, as well as the residential proposed on the subject property. With respect to the site as a whole, there are regulations that are proposed with respect to the berm and the buffer along the South Lot Line. There are requirements relating to a street-line build-out to bring the buildings up along Northfield Drive and Bridge Street. Those are four meters from the general street line. A side yard setback, so that accommodates the hydro corridor 43 meters, and a rear yard setback towards Deer Run Park of 7.5 meters, as well as parking setbacks for the underground structures. With respect to urban design, staff have included a number of directives within the report to, from council to staff, so that the development be substantially consistent with the building elevations in the staff report or better. A higher design of architectural and urban design with respect to the buildings. Recommendations that annoys assessment be incorporated into the building design. Provisions around screening the drive-through from Bridge Street, and the commercial buildings be designed for that two-story massing with a minimum of six-meter height limit, and further wind analysis being undertaken. That concludes my brief presentation. Representatives of the applicant are here as well to assist council in understanding development or answering questions, and I'll do my best to answer any of council's questions.
Okay. Question, Counselor Freeman?
With regard to the drive-through, that's a singular issue that's been raised time and again by the broader citizenry, in addition to the issues that were included that were direction of site plan from the previous application. So when you say screening it from Bridge Street, can you help me to better understand what is meant by that? Because we want to still maintain a good pedestrian realm there, so surely you don't mean just like some kind of fence or something being constructed there?
Through you, Mayor Jaworski, to Counselor Freeman, the intention is not a fence. The intention would be to, some enhanced landscaping to screen kind of the lower levels of the vehicles, but still provide visibility into the site and ensure a good pedestrian public realm.
My second question is with regard to wind analysis. So is that, would that address the active transportation realm on Bridge and Northfield? Or is this the wind analysis within the site? What, like, what is that made reference to?
Through you, Mayor Jaworski, to Counselor Freeman, our urban design requirements are that a wind study be undertaken for any buildings that are six stories in height. So in this case, wind would be assessed both to the public realm as well as within the site, to ensure that both, or that human comfort is maintained within the property and along the adjacent street edge.
Am I right in remembering that in the informal, there was a request for a left turn out of the site onto Bridge Street? And I heard you say earlier that no-left turn on Bridge Street would be permitted.
Through you, Mayor Jaworski, to Counselor Freeman, the original application that was advanced to staff identified a full-turn movements with respect to that Bridge Street vehicular access. Through further discussions with the applicant, they have agreed to have a no-left out in that location.
Further questions? Seeing none. Thank you, Joel. I will now ask the one registered delegate to come forward, Jennifer Voss, JV Planning and Development Consulting. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Jaworski, members of council. My name is Jennifer Voss, and I'm here tonight with Paul Levesque, president of Urban Legend Developments. Urban Legend Developments is a new developer in Waterloo region, and I'm happy to say that although Paul and I have a number of years of development experience behind us, this is our first project as Urban Legend. As you will see, we have put a lot of thought into the building and site design, which will not only enhance this corner of the city architecturally speaking, but will introduce a medium-density residential housing type in an area predominantly of single-detached dwellings. And it will also add a commercial component that will act as a focal point or destination for the adjacent neighborhood and businesses. which is referred to as Building A. As Joel indicated, the proposed development consists of a six-story mixed-use building and two other six-story residential apartment buildings, and three standalone commercial buildings. Again, the rendering depicts the mixed-use building, which contains 70 residential units and approximately 10,000 square feet of ground-floor commercial space. Building A is, also contains a rooftop terrace and indoor common amenity area located on the first floor, fronting Northfield Drive, that will serve Building A. And there's also a outdoor amenity area from the party room that fronts onto Northfield Drive. Buildings A and B are connected with a one-story lobby, as depicted on the right-hand side. So again, this is the phasing plan that Joel has reviewed. Building A, the mixed-use building, will be our first phase. Building B, which contains the 102 units and the underground parking structure, will be the second phase, and Building C will contain 116 units, and it is the third phase. In terms of a construction timeline for the development, we're opening up a sales centre on the site slated for August of 2018, so in a couple of months. We intend to, depending on market and sales, we intend to service this fall with Buildings A and B under construction in the spring of 2019. And again, depending on sales, Building C may also be under construction in 2019. We hope to finish the site as quickly as possible. I just wanted to go through briefly just kind of like some of the design considerations with the building. The development was designed with an urban, modern architectural aesthetic. Some of the main components in terms of design, the commercial units within the mixed-use building have large windows and main entrances overlooking the multi-use trail planned for Northfield Drive. Again, the indoor amenity area in Building A was designed with a large window wall fronting Northfield, and the outdoor amenity areas have been incorporated along the front facades of all the residential buildings. And there are direct pedestrian connections to the transit stops on, there's a new proposed, there's a new transit stop on Northfield Drive and existing transit stops on Bridge Street. The, the building facades that are visually prominent with a high-contrast complementary colour scheme, the corner window feature, which is here, so is on, is replicated in all three six-story buildings, and this is the north elevation on main, at the main site entrance on Northfield, so you'll see how the two main architectural window features frame the entrance to the site. The south elevation will have common courtyard features. This is Building A, this is Building B, so there will be a common courtyard amenity feature here, as well as on Building C. The commercial pads, the commercial pad sites are proposed to front directly onto Northfield and Bridge, and are proposed to be positioned to define the street edge. The corner pad is intended to be a higher-end type restaurant, and it's intended to provide a focal point at the intersection of Northfield Drive and Bridge. That's, in summary, it's the proposal, and I'm happy to answer any questions council may have.
Great. Thank you, Jennifer. Does anyone have questions for the delegate? Seeing none. Thank you. Is there anyone else present here tonight who wish to speak to this application? Seeing none. If there are no more delegations, this formal public meeting is now concluded. The application now open to council for motion and debate. Council Freeman?
Through you, Mayor Jaworski. Having considered all written and oral submissions from the public and stakeholders, and considered the professional claims of planning staff, council approve zoning bylaw amendments at 1803, 255 Northfield Drive East in accordance with Section 7 of IPPW 2018041 for the reasons specified in Section 6 conclusions of the report. So I'll move it with that bylaw wording in support, and just one quick, I'll just make a quick support.
And secondly, council.
So I just, I wanted council to know, because you'll recall how much work was done by the neighbourhood on this previous application, and you'll note that there's no one here tonight. So there's, there's a lot, there's a lot of pieces to this puzzle, and the applicant was good enough to allow a second community meeting, and we had, I think the people that were really interested in this application did attend that meeting, and the things that they were most concerned about include the drive-through, and so I hope that as it goes through site plan, the screening related to that and maintaining the important pedestrian realm on Bridge Street is important. They were worried about the left-turn lane onto Bridge, so that's been withdrawn, and they were incredibly worried about the continuity of the agreement around the berm between the development and the houses on Deer Run, and so I think that the applicant was able to really be concise and help people understand that no changes are being requested from the original approvals where that piece of this puzzle was concerned. This application is a lot closer to what people believed that they moved in next to some time ago, and the removal of the grocery store from the application was a significant improvement to the site plan, I think, in the mind's eye of those folks that would back directly onto this property. So, you know, with that, I feel that it will be nice to see this development build out, and I wish the developers good luck with it.
Seeing no further comments, are there? Are you comments? Okay, let's hold on. All is in favour? Okay, it's good. Thank you. This is a formal public meeting, considers zone change application Z 1801, 35 to 41 King Street North, 2359058 Ontario Inc. Any persons who want further notices to this application, including the passage of any bylaw, should sign the appropriate register in the binder located at the deck at the rear of the council chambers. There's more than one here tonight. Will the clerk please advise council of the method used to give notice of the meeting and the date's notice was given?
Notice is advertised in the Waterloo Chronicle on June 7, 2018, and mailed or emailed on June 5, 2018, to all property owners within 120 metres of the subject property, to public agencies, to all persons who signed in or spoke at the informal public meeting held on March 5, 2018, and to all persons who requested further notice.
Welcome, Joel.
Thank you, Mayor Jaworski, members of council. This is another one of Natalie's files, so I'll do my best to navigate council through it. This is the formal public hearing for zoning bylaw amendment Z 1801 for 35 to 41 King Street North, numbered company 2359058 Ontario Inc. The subject lands are located at, my mouse here, at King Street and Dupont. This is the historic post office site, which forms part of the property, and the balance of the property before council is this vacant parcel beside it to the north. The subject lands are located, again, within the uptown, are about 0.13 hectares in size, and again have the historic post office as the anchoring component of the site. The lands are surrounded by commercial and residential properties, and of note is the Old Market Hotel at 12 Dupont. Just walk council through some of the photographs of the site. So this is the site looking out towards King Street. This is the site from King Street looking into the vacant lands with the Market Hotel portion of it in behind. This is the property immediately to the north. This is part of the historic hotel, sorry, historic post office building, that's the north facade. This is looking at part of the Market Hotel, and this is looking from the vacant lands through towards Dupont Street. This is the historic post office building and the Market Hotel building, and this would be the access coming into the proposed addition. Again, the historic post office building at the corner and the Market Hotel imagery. So the lands are designated uptown commercial core in the official plan, as well as within the uptown urban growth centre, within a primary node on the main street where heights are permitted up to 16 metres within 30 metres of King Street. The zoning is currently commercial eight with a number of site-specific bylaws. The first bylaw, the 2005 bylaw restricts the height on the property, the 2017 bylaws that add additional permissions within or as an extension to the commercial eight zoning. The amendment before council is to request site-specific provisions to the C8 zoning to do two things. First, to reduce the parking requirement from 28 spaces to five spaces, and secondly, to reduce the rear yard setback from four and a half metres to 0.91 metres. So looking at the property, Dupont, King Street, the historic post office site is shown in green, and the proposed addition to that building is identified in blue. Parking to the site would be coming from Dupont across that rear portion of the historic post office site into an enclosed section of the building in this area, and that enclosed parking area from a structural perspective requires the building to be extended further towards that rear lot line, which is this lot line that is common with the Market Hotel property. And that parking extension in through here is what drives that rear yard setback reduction down to 0.91 metres. And the parking requirement that is provided for the site is a function of the size of the property at the end of the day, and I'll walk council through that in a little bit more detail. But to give a sense of the proposed development, you can see on the diagrams the existing hotel property, and then from a massing perspective, an illustration of what the general, the general development will look like. You've got ground-floor retail that's being proposed, as well as upper-story office, three-story building. Looking at it, this is Dupont Street, the Market Hotel, and the historic post office looking through into the lane. Again, looking kind of from a bird's-eye view down towards the site and the new addition here, and then again, looking upwards from King Street, the historic post office with the addition in behind. Again, a number of items were evaluated by staff, which are detailed in the staff report. As I indicated, the requirement for the rear yard setback is four and a half metres within the commercial eight zone. This is being really driven down to that 0.91 based on the function of the design of the structure with the requirement to enclose the parking. That has been assessed with respect to the designated adjacent properties from a heritage perspective. We've also looked at it from a SEP Ted perspective, as well as the reasons for the request, and in staff's opinion, based on her review as outlined in the staff report, we are supportive of that 0.91 metre setback, and we recognise that further site plan approval is required for the project. With respect to the parking reduction, there is a requirement for this amount of building floor area to be 29 spaces. The applicant is proposing five spaces, which is the maximum amount that they could possibly construct on this property from a surface perspective. With respect to the old post office property, it is grandfathered, and the previous building that was on the property that burnt down a number of years ago effectively had no legal parking on it. So it's, there's a provision in the zoning bylaw that says if you reconstruct that building that burnt down within two years, then the amount of parking that was on the property can continue to be. So in that case, there was zero parking previously in the property. If there was the opportunity or the ability to construct within two years, no parking would have been required for the replication of that structure that was burned, that burnt down. Ultimately, the two-year timeframe has lapsed, which is why the higher parking is kicking in. From the perspective of the property, it is in the uptown urban growth centre, has great access to transit, there are public parking facilities nearby. There's also provisions within the community improvement plan that allow 185 square metres of parking to be, or a building area to be constructed with zero parking. The proposed uses are generally pedestrian-oriented in terms of the retail uses, and again, the office space is relatively small, and there are a number of smaller office users that operate without or with a limited amount of parking. And again, it's a unique site in that it was a property that was previously occupied, did burn down, and really is the intention of the applicant to fill in the main street where there is a gap, replicating the built form and the massing of the structure along the street edge of King Street, but being sympathetic to the surrounding heritage buildings. In staff's recommendations outlined in the report are to reduce the parking to five spaces, reduce the rear yard to 0.91 metres tied to the addition only, that there be a setback along King Street for the first story of 1.72 metres to create a bit of a transition, and to open up the views at the pedestrian level to the historic post office building, to cap the height at 14 metres in three stories, and to include a modest bike parking requirement within the zoning regulations. Site plan directives are that the building or the development be substantially consistent with the elevations that are provided in the staff report, that high standard of architecture and urban design be provided, that the hydro pole that is in the rear yard currently behind the historic post office be relocated, that SEP Ted principles be reviewed as part of the new construction, that the heritage properties be respected, that views to the heritage historic clock tower be maintained, and then a Phase 2 heritage impact assessment be completed. I will note that prior to the development moving forward, a heritage permit will be required, and the development is subject to site plan approval. That concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any of council's questions.
Questions from council. Council Henry?
I think briefly, Joel, you touched on the heritage permit being required, I think, given the connections to the old, the old, old post office in uptown. I just wanted to check, I did see comments from the Heritage Committee as part of the report that was drawn up, wondering about some of the view sheds of some of the outcrops of the building. Is the heritage permit and site planning stage the time when those concerns are best dealt with?
Through you, Mayor Jaworski, to Council Henry, the detailed design stage is the best time to review those matters, so in our view, we were looking at the zoning that was being requested for the site. Some of those heritage considerations are best dealt with at the heritage permit and the site planning stage.
I wasn't sure, just thought that would be useful to check. Thank you.
Further questions from council? Seeing none. Thank you very much, Joel. I want to ask the registered delegations to come forward, of which we have one. Welcome, Carol Weeby.
Good evening, Mayor Jaworski, members of council. It's my pleasure to be here this evening on behalf of the owner. I would point out that I also have Greg Pacchini from Martin Simmons Architects, and Vanessa Hicks, who's a heritage planner with MHPC Planning, in case there's some specific questions that you may have following my presentation. And I'd also like to acknowledge the efforts of staff, certainly Natalie Hardaker, who is not here this evening, Michelle Lee also, and Joel Carter. We've had extensive consultations and discussions with staff, and I appreciate the effort that they've made to get this application in front of council before summer recess, so we had our informal back in March, and so I know that there's been a lot of back and forth since then to get this application in front of council, so I appreciate that very much. In my discussions with Natalie about a week ago, she anticipated that this was a very full agenda, and so she asked that I make my presentation very, very brief, and my...
How nice of her for us.
Yes, and the sum total of my presentation is one slide. I do have some images. I bet you that's a record, isn't it? So first, I'll try and stretch it out for 10 minutes if you want, but in summary, we support the conclusions and the recommendations that have been presented by staff, and it is a very thorough and comprehensive report, and I'm assuming that council has gone through that in some detail. So in conclusion, you know, it is our opinion that the amendments conform to and are consistent with the growth plan for the Greater Grown Horseshoe, they're consistent with the provincial policy statement, they're also consistent with the region of Waterloo official plan, and most importantly, they comply with your own official plan. We believe that the amendments represent an efficient use of land and an appropriate form of development. It's both consistent with and complementary to the streetscape, both along King and Dupont. And again, through the heritage impact assessments that has been done today, the Phase 1 and the subsequent Phase 2, again... again, is our opinion that the proposed amendments that are before you this evening will not adversely impact the cultural heritage resources, both along 35 King and along, what, 12 Dupont. We, you know, it was timely that there was a very fulsome presentation this evening on active transportation. And in my discussions with many transportation experts, they say, you know, one of them, you can incent people to get out of their cars, so you have the carrot, but you can also have the stick. And, and one of the best ways to get people out of their cars is to not make it convenient for them to use their cars. So one of the most effective ways is to, you know, see that parking rate reduced. If you provide lots of parking for people, they will use it. If you provide limited parking, then they'll be industrious in how they get to, to work or how they get to shop. And the owner of the property is, is quite confident that there are businesses looking to lease space, rent space in the uptown, fully aware that there are not going to have the same parking levels that they would in a suburban location. So this is what he's, he's trying to attract. And so we think that this is both an efficient use of the land. It replaces that, that empty space that's, that leaves a very noticeable gap in the streetscape. And in conclusion, you know, again, it's my opinion that this is sound land use planning. It's appropriate for the subject lands. And I'm here really to answer any questions. Now, I do have a few other colored images that I, I think would show. And this, so what this shows is that you can see on the right-hand side of the screen, the new building is, is very open, it's, it's clean, streamlined. It represents and reflects sort of that built massing further north along King. But you can see that it, it doesn't compete with the, the historic post office. So the post office is certainly going to be much more ornate, certainly with the reddish-brown stone. It, it will continue to be the predominant view along King Street at this corner. And you can see that there's a two-story connecting link. And if you recall at the informal public meeting, what, what we noted is that historically, there's been a solid building beside the historic post office. So now with this extensive glazing, you're actually going to see more of that historic post office, that north wall than you would have seen otherwise. So again, at night, it's going to be really attractive. And then here is again, the view further south. And I think one of the comments from the municipal heritage committee was that they wanted to make sure that that, that iconic tower was going to be visible from King. And that this image certainly shows that it's still going to be that predominant view as you're traveling south along King Street. And then the last rendering we have is along Dupont. And you can see the, the Market Hotel at 12 Dupont is still that, that whole east facade is still highly visible. And then that new addition sort of tucks back in there. And so you have these two very important heritage buildings sort of framing that, that new, modern, clean look. So again, the intent is to complement, not, not to compete, and certainly not to take attention away from those two heritage buildings. And my last two slides are two local examples. So many of you will recognize this. This is down in Cambridge in Galt. And this is the recently completed now, there's still a lot of renovations being done. But this is the old post office that backs onto the Grand River. And so again, this is a very similar approach where you have a, a very ornate historic building designated, again with a clock tower, and then you can see that addition where again, very simple, clean, meant to complement and not try and replicate. And then the last image, this is Cambridge City Hall. So we have the old Cambridge City Hall on the right-hand side of the screen. And then you have this connecting link to, to the brand-new City Hall. So again, use of very modern materials, not trying to replicate the, the heritage materials on, on both of those buildings. So, so I think this is a good example of, of what we can see along King Street. So that is the end of my presentation. And if there's any questions, I'll do my best to answer them.
And there are, from Counsel Durrell and Counsel Whaley so far.
Thank you. Through you, Mayor Jaworski. Thanks, Carol. My first question is around, obviously, this, if you want to go back to the building, that would be great. There we go. Yeah, actually, this is the perfect one. So right where that white car is driving by, between Pony Boy and the building. I, I think I had seen some drawings with staff that they showed me where there was a bit of a patio here. What's the purpose of that space and how much, what does that actually look like? Is that, is that a meter, two meters?
Are you talking about-
Between Pony Boy and the new build?
This area here?
Yes, correct.
So there is actually windows along here, because there's residential uses, yeah.
They're apartments, yeah.
Along here. And then there is actually an entrance at the back of that building. So this is primarily to provide pedestrian access along the side of that building.
Okay.
To maintain, historically, there's always been a pedestrian access along the side of this building and around to the back.
Okay.
But this building will have glazing on, on this side, so it will be open. And there will be windows again on the second and third. So there'll be that ability to look down into that, that area.
So I guess, just to staff, when I think about some of the other buildings in uptown that have those spaces, they can become garbage infill spaces or other things. So just to, are there things that we can do to make sure that it doesn't become like beside Beta?
Through you, Mayor Jaworski, to Counsel Durrell. One of the considerations that we looked at at the very beginning of this process was those spaces, such as the one you're speaking of, and how they will be used and how they will function when the, the development is built. Certainly, it's a matter that's more likely best dealt with through the site planning of, of the, of the development. But it is a space that we want to make sure that is designed well and does not become an area that, you know, is, is unused and unwanted. It should be formed part of the site, part of the development. The, the challenge is, as Ms. Weeby indicated, is the existing building to the north has certain openings that are on it, which require from a building code perspective, a separation to be created. So we're maximizing the amount of development on the property and still complying with the building code. And we will certainly look at these spaces as part of the site plan process.
Yeah, great. I mean, it's an opportunity to do something creative, I think. Carol, I, the other thing I was curious about is it's office space and retail. We always do, there's like a job calculator. Do you know how many people will be working in this building?
The, the new building is, surprisingly, it's almost the same square footage as the post office. So the new building is just over 17,000 square feet. I'll give it an imperial or just about 1,600 square meters. Over primarily two floors of office. And then the retail is about 3,000 square meters. So if you use three employees per thousand square feet.
Yeah, something like that.
But if you add that to the existing post office combined, the two buildings are just over 30,000 square feet. And about a third of that is on the ground floor. Now, the, the intent is that both, in both buildings, that would be retail. So it's about 10, 10, and 10. So there's about 20,000 of office space between the two, the two floors. So if you do, it's about 60 people has potential. That's, that's at the, the maximum.
Okay.
So it's not a huge amount, but it's still, it's an incremental increase in the total amount of office space.
Oh, we count every job in uptown since we started the strategy. That's great. I guess the other thing to, you know, it's been a bit disappointing that this post office has sat empty for so long. So this is the catalyst, this building, to get both complete. So we'll start to see that corner come alive again?
That, that's the plan. And I should also point out, part of the design impetus to having the new building extend to the rear was twofold, as, as Mr. Cotter said, to accommodate that, that ground floor parking and have the drive aisle. But more importantly, to be able to create a floor plate, a, a, a little larger floor plate on that second and third floor so that it would attract a slightly wider range of office tenants as well. Because a lot of the buildings in the uptown are very small, and you have very constrained office space, you know, 3,000, 4,000 square feet. So you're only going to attract a very, very small sole practitioner type of a business. If you can double that footprint on that single floor plate, then it opens up different opportunities. And it helps to drive the efficiency in the new building. It helps to offset the inefficiencies in the old building. So there's a lot of, you know, it's a beautiful building, but it's, it was never designed to be an efficient office space. So it's, it's trying to compensate for-
The post office?
Yes, the post office.
Yeah, they weren't thinking about that in the 1800s, right?
So it's trying to, you know, balance, create a more efficient building with the new to sort of offset. And, and I'm not sure if you're aware, but the, the current owner is undertaking some fairly extensive renovations and improvements to the historic post office inside, just to modernize it for, for current office users.
So Counsel Whaley.
Well, Carol, just for the record, you only used half your time. And that doesn't mean that for your next presentation, you can add five minutes.
No, I can't, I can't use it for the next-
You cannot add five minutes to your next presentation. With respect to this vacant lot caused by fire, really has been kind of like a missing tooth in the smile of the uptown for just too long. My question to you is, assuming that you get approval tonight, when you, when can you, the shovels hit the ground?
Well, and Mr. Pacchini can verify that, that once we knew that this formal public meeting was scheduled, Mr. Georgiades called them and said, "How quickly can you get started on working drawings?" So the intent is to get the application in for site plan as soon as possible and, and go full tilt.
And speaking of site plan, because you have the architect here tonight, it's a really bold vision. And that juxtaposition between old and new is really, really captivating. You just love it. But as you go through the site plan, I really need you to hold on to your dream and make sure that the end result will be something that you'll be proud of, but the community will be proud of. It's going to look just like that. We hope that through the process, that you can just keep that dream alive.
I think in the evening is when it will really shine ironically, because you'll have that, the lighting on, on the old building as well, so.
Seeing no further questions, Carol. Thank you. Is there anyone else present here tonight who wishes to speak to this application? Seeing none. If there are no more delegations, this formal public meeting is concluded, and the application is now open to counsel for a motion and debate. Counselor Durrell, would you like to move this?
Yes, I'd love to move this with a comment, having-
Move on seconded. Counselor Whaley does.
All right. Start your clock, Jeff Henry.
Go for it.
Having considered all written and oral submissions from Republican stakeholders and consider the professional opinions of planning staff, counsel approves zoning bylaw amendment Z 1801, 3541 King Street North, and according to Section 7 of IPPW 2018042 for the reasons specified in Section 6 of the report.
We'll have to time those two on YouTube. Any further discussion?
Yes.
Oh, go ahead, please.
Yeah, I mean, this, this is, I think, a really unique way of, and, you know, I think Carol said it, but I think it's a stunning building. It's one of our landmark buildings. When you think of uptown, this is one of the photo ops you get. I think about our CAO and his office, he has a stunning picture of the fire. But what's so remarkable about it is, is how that post office was so resilient during that fire and, and, and continues to be as we move forward. So I love how respectful that this, this new design is. So hats off to the architect. It's stunning. You know, I, I said we count every single job in uptown because it's so important these days to start to get that balance of people living in uptown and people working in uptown. So every job counts. And I think, you know, we're ticking a couple of boxes here. It's right across the street from Communitec, where small businesses are growing into medium businesses. This now has space for it. There are so many reasons why this is the appropriate and respectful and right building for that space. So I hope counsel agrees, and we move forward with it.
From the ashes rises a glass phoenix. All those, oh, any further discussion? All those in favor? All of us. Thank you. Now, back to our regular scheduled programming. We have information there from Regional Council of March 28. Let's skip down to other business counselors. Other, other business? No other business? If not, we actually have a number of bylaws, and there's actually one additional one right at the end. Gee, a late starter. Bylaw to amend, bylaw 2017082 as amended to delegate authority to execute lease agreements to the CAO, et cetera, that we discussed. Someone want to move some bylaws? Counsel Henry and Freeman do. Anybody want to vote for them? All those in favor? It's all of us. And who wants to adjourn? Counsel Reith? Counsel Reith? Counsel Freeman? Then we are so adjourned, thanks to our-
See you in September.
Webcast viewers.
See you in September.
Enjoy your summer then. Yeah, see, I'll, I'll be here later.